Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you.
Today is July 6th, 2022, and the planning board is now in session. We are going to start with, first, the open meetings. We've got appropriate notice has been filed for the open meetings as per required. We have, I'd like to do a quick roll call if we can, Diana.
Here.
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 Here. And as is customary, we'll do a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So tonight, we will be hearing on Diamond Chip Realty. This is a carryover from our June 1st, 2022 meeting. So we will be getting into shortly a continuation of the environmental component of that. I believe we left off, Dave, with your letter last. But Mike, you want to go through the resolutions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve application number 2388 memorializing resolution of the Planning Board of Township of Sparta approving an additional 190-day extension to time the record deeds of minor subdivision and reapproving the lot line adjustment, minor subdivision and C variants, application of John Hanson relating to block 4008, lot 59, and 61, and located in the R3 zone, decided on June 15th, 2022.
Second.
Diana, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Also like to make a motion to approve application number 697 memorializing resolution of the Planning Board of the Township of Sparta approving the preliminary and final site plan, plan development application of Nikelock Paving Stones LLC related to the property known as Block 16005, Lot 5, at 482 Houses Corner Road, and located in the PDRM-1 Zone District, decided on June 15th, 2022.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Diana, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Right. And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve application number 695 memorializing resolution of the Planning Board of Township of Sparta approving the amended preliminary and final site plan of EFKA Transport for the former Jam Properties LLC, site planned property known as Block 16001, Lot 14, and located at 12 Aaron Way in the ED Zone District, decided on June 15th, 2022.
Can I get a second?
I'll second. Oh, go ahead. I'll second.
Okay. Diana, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yeah, if he was here at the last meeting.
That's okay. It is three yeses.
Yeah. Thank you, John. Okay. So I share this is for Diamond Chip Realty LLC, application number 689, 33 Demarest Road, Block 12008, Lot 23, preliminary major site plan. Again, this is continuation from our previous meeting on June 1st. So I would ask everybody, please, again, we've got a full house. It's great to see everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight and being part of this discussion. Please, we will, the sequence of events for this evening, as with, as the proceedings have traditionally gone, we are currently in process of discussing environmental. We are hearing a report from David Simmons in response to that report. At that point, the applicant will provide testimony to environmental. Once applicant, once the applicant is finished with his testimony, the board will ask a variety of questions of the applicant or their experts, at which point we will then turn that over to cross-examination for any of the attorneys that are in the room representing themselves or others. And then, once all of that has been addressed, if there are no other witnesses or expert testimony, we would then turn that to the public. So I wanted to share that with you in advance, just because we've got a lot of material to get through tonight. So our meeting ends, we're going to adjourn the meeting at 10:00 PM. So just wanted to give everybody kind of a heads up on where we are within the process and just from a timing perspective.
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. We have just, we have, yes, honor.
Yeah, hold on one second, Mr. Dash, please. Just before we get into those proceedings, I think there was a quick question. We wanted confirmation. Mr. Murphy, I know you had raised a question with regards to updating the application to ensure that the ownership amounts are included in there. Mr. Goen, I don't know if that's been completed yet, but I would advise you, please do make a note of that, because that would certainly be cause for an incomplete application. Mr. Dash?
Yes, honor and Dash. My co-caller here, Neil Clark. Mr. Chairman, we received a letter, as the planning board did as well, dated July 1 from Mr. Goen's office, and just thought it'd be, makes sense to address that now, the housekeeping, the scheduling, before we get into the substance of the hearing. As we indicated to the Planning Board Secretary yesterday, we have now engaged an expert, a forensic hydrogeologist by the name of Tom McGuire, and we have indicated what areas he'd be testifying to, generally speaking, in response to the applicant's environmental impact statement. And we should probably discuss now that his availability for us at this point is October, first meeting in October. We believe that in relation to what has, the timing that has come so far, and in consideration of the applicant's remaining experts, the traffic, the environment, October would likely fall into place as to appropriate timing for our expert. But we would like to open that up for discussion, see if there's any objection to that, so we can plan accordingly.
Well, I'll open it up to some of the board members. I think, you know, secondary testimony, certainly fine with. I would have a concern doing that four months out, considering that we're in environmental. I don't understand why we, if we're doing these under normal course, I understand he's probably busy. Sat down with enough CEOs and board members to know that timing's not always easy, but I can usually get him within a month or two. Should not be four months out. So is there a specific reason why there, he's not available for four months, or approximately four months?
Well, sure. So first is that we recently engaged in.
Actually, two. I don't know where they're four months from. It's July.
July. July.
Didn't they say October?
In October?
Yeah, first, the first, first meeting board. So we have, we have essentially, we have this meeting that we're not, maybe we'll get through the environmental. The traffic will likely take through, through August and September, and I'm not sure what the status of the town's traffic consultant is. When are we going to hear them? So the rebuttal testimony would be suited for October. It would fall into place. We've taken three months since March to come to just the environmental here. It would seem in proportion to the time that has been given to the applicant to allow us, again, from now until October, to present our environmental.
So again, I don't object to the testimony. I guess my question would be, is there an opportunity? Or maybe we can just work offline with Diana with regards to scheduling of that, because I would like to keep that within, to the extent that we can, any portion as we're covering the environmental. Just for logistics sake, I would rather make sure that the environmental is contained together as we're doing cross-examination and while we've got the focus on the environmental. So maybe we can just have an offline discussion, and we'll look at potential dates, or you can go back to the environmentalists and see if there's another opportunity for them to potentially look at earlier times instead of necessarily waiting till October.
Yeah, I think also what you'll align in this sort of, in our position, why, in an actual report, in an actual analysis. So unlike sort of maybe what the, how, what I was on meeting, the other application, and then kind of review it, you may do it in separate tests, you may actually do those sides. It's going to be a very thorough one, and he has a lot of experience, particularly in the level for large litigation involving private owners. So that type of analysis that he's going to do takes a lot. So it's not simply to read the applicant's, you know, environmental impact, say, well, you know, I don't like that, I don't like that. He's actually going to do an independent analysis to sort of verify what they have, all of you, in mind. So that's why, if there's a little more time than is usually necessary.
And actually, just to supplement, we will be submitting a written report from Mr. McGuire, and we'll not just the testimony. So we'll, I want to provide that in advance for the board to review, provide it to the board consultants. We'd like to do that in, you know, within the next two months, and give them time to review it, circulate that, similarly how it was done in the applicant's side. So just fairness to the process.
Okay. I guess I'd open it up to the board with regards to concerns, questions, objections.
And I'll echo in just the effort of time and process. The EIS that they're doing is, you just said, is independent of what was submitted and/or you've been able to review, but is there going to be rebuttal provisions in this report to the testimony being heard?
Yes, to the, to the EIS statement in particular.
And would Mr. McGuire be reviewing and/or updating himself on all the previous hearings? And is he in attendance tonight?
He's not in attendance tonight, but he will be, we provide it, he will review, so he'll be at his feet on all, all the testimony. And we wanted to give as much as notice that we, again, you know, we're a business organization, we're just engaging, we wanted to, as soon as we've engaged, we've already noticed to, to the applicant, to the board, as soon as we've been formally engaged, and so we're here to submit that.
Okay. I mean, I don't have an issue with it. I wouldn't, you know, if we can get him earlier, I'd rather get him earlier. You know, so I'd like to have a conversation with the guys and see. Understanding it's going to take some time for them to do his analysis and his report, and I certainly appreciate that. And I want to give him the flexibility and, you know, everybody the flexibility to try and take some time to get that report done. I would like to work with you, though, to see if we can't get that sped up a little bit, because I.
Yeah, and I would like to offer that, you know, if we are going to look at that time period, we don't offer any extensions. So you mentioned he may be doing his own independent testing, studies, whatnot, but we, we don't think we're in a, I would suggest that we would not be offering any extensions to that.
Correct. Yeah, and I think it, you know, right now, it's.
You have to go back to the October date.
So we, and Tom, correct me if I'm, you know, just in terms of guidance with regards to the testimony of that, the reporting is there from a time period perspective. I guess my concern is, are we going to end up inevitably pushing or delaying the process? Like, what happens, for example, if we get through traffic and everything prior to October? I don't want this to be used as a reason why we can't complete hearings, I guess is my, my main question.
Yes, you need extensions from the applicant to go past July. So in order to be able to, you can't really schedule anything for, you can't really schedule anything for October now, because you do not yet know if you'll have extensions from the applicant, which are required under the municipal land use law for the board to have jurisdiction to continue. So the applicant hasn't spoken on this request by Mr. Dash. You might want to hear Mr. Goen on this subject.
Okay. Thanks, Tom, for the guidance. Mr. Goen, thoughts?
Certainly, we don't, we'd rather not wait until October for that. One of the things we, one of the things we did want to talk about, well, we've been at this for several months, and every time that we've come before this board, and a couple of times in writing, we have requested that this board holds a special meeting so that we would do this more than once a month to try to get through this, so we're not at this for a year or more, trying to get through this approval process. It is a preliminary approval. We've got two more applications after this before this board, until we actually get to the point of zoning approval, we can get construction permits. We've got a lengthy process to go. We're trying to get through this as expeditiously as possible. So I'm not, I'm not in a position where I can consent to an extension through October to allow that. I did want to talk about when we were going to be heard next, potentially in July, or if this was going to be the first meeting in August. But beyond that, I don't really have any authority to extend beyond, beyond that, so.
Okay. Mr. Collins?
You heard the applicant, they're not going to extend till October at this time, so everyone should act accordingly.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we heard the same argument back in April, that there was going to be no extension. We're not going to get through, the applicant's not going to finish tonight. They're not going to finish in August. I don't know what the board's pleasure is at this point with respect to the special meetings in, in the summer. So as a matter of practicality, the refusal to grant extensions is pretty transparent. And, and we're just asking for a fair process. Our courts have signaled that there is a fair opportunity for objectors to present. We're not talking about, you know, it's six or eight months away. Where, in applications of this magnitude and scope, there's well-settled precedent for matters to go on for several months. There's nothing unusual about this. This is a very commonplace-type scheduling. The matter was only heard in March. We're in, we're in July now, in the middle of summer, which tells me for an October hearing. Folks have vacations planned. I'm sure the planning board has vacations. We can't necessarily accommodate special hearings. It's a very reasonable request. The board will make its decision, but the request is patently reasonable. We've provided sufficient notice, and the board will decide how it will. We'll do what we need to do.
Chairman, maybe a problem, if earlier you were commenting, you said that the, the ownership percentages were not yet in the back, in the application forever.
Correct.
So the application, in essence, is not completely developed, and it's at our discretion to rule it incomplete and restart when it is. No, I would disagree with that.
Yeah, John, the, the application is complete. What, what board member, Murphy, noticed was that the form submitted needed to be updated to include all the current owners of the applicant, so.
Which has changed since the application.
Which has changed, but, but that is not a basis. Once the application started, it was complete, and the hearing clock started. So if we're going to, I would recommend to the chairman that you continue proceeding tonight, see how far we get, and you'll decide whether you get, ask for an extension of time at the end of tonight's meeting, and to what date you are scheduling it. That's customarily the way to address whether there'll be any extensions. The board has no discretion to laterally, on its own accord, extend the deadline of the municipal land use law, or the deadline offered by the voluntary nature of the applicant. So my recommendation to you tonight is to go ahead and proceed, see how far we get, see where we schedule it to the next meeting or whenever, and discuss that, that schedule at the end of the meeting.
Did Mr. McGuire give you a deadline for his deliverable to be submitted to, to you and your team?
Yeah, in, in, in a draft, or final?
So, following Tom's recommendation, I'm fine to have the testimony. It's not going to stop or delay the proceedings, the current proceedings, so we'll continue as, you know, as we have been. I would like to, again, I would ask you respectfully, go back to your environmental expert, ask them what they can do to help accelerate it a little bit. Just, again, trying to find the balance between the two sides here to accommodate both your request, and I don't want to extend these proceedings any longer than we absolutely have to. And again, can't predict what pace we will get through everything. So I would follow Tom's recommendation that we revisit that at the continuation of, after this meeting.
Mr. Chairman, do we know when the town's traffic consultant will be presented?
No, actually, we have not received a copy of the traffic report yet from them. So I don't know. I know he was engaged. It's been a month, roughly, give or take. So I believe my last update I had received from the engineer and from the town manager is that a final report should be available very soon. So it would be about a month or so for them to complete it. So I, I understand. I know where you're going, Mr. Dash. I understand.
Good experts can't just drop things on a dime. You know, you have one of the payment experts.
We're, we're not asking anybody to drop anything on a dime.
I just, I would just ask the planning board to emphasize the C, and emphasize the O, yes, and the whole entire evaluation. I know that was what everyone wants to do here. And so I understand the need, you know, to get this through, understand the developer's point of view. The argument's the same thing, if I were to, it's just, but I think you have to remember what your charge is here. Your charge here is just to make the whole entire evaluation of this application. By hearing a renowned hydrogeologist, on an issue that's really important, dealing with an aquifer that supplies a ton of drinking water to this town, before you go forward, it's important that you hear that. Because otherwise, what would happen? To hear it now, because I understand it'll be later proceeding, but the problem is, if he, why stop it nine months from now, when you can hear something that could change your decision?
Nobody's disputing that fact, Mr. Clark, and that's why we've agreed to move forward with it.
Sure. And then just one final thing. Another reason why it took so long for us to actually be an expert is that we actually had experts who said, I cannot represent you, with that, because I've then previously represented somebody, owner of the diamond chip, either Mr. Uncle, Mr. Short, you know, or Mr. Harrow. And so what that, and we've already had one other town professional have to recuse himself from hearing the application with a prior representation. So what that leads us to believe is, we can make sure that this process did not change by political conflict of interest based on our. I would respectfully ask, I'm not asking to adjourn the proceedings, what I'm asking is that the members of the, of the planning board and the town professionals, just as opposed to the public, whether they've ever had a prior representational personal or business relationship within those arms. It's very simple. We do it all the time as lawyers. If we're bringing a case, someone says, you, we're thinking of bringing a case against Pfizer, has anyone ever represented Pfizer? It takes, it doesn't take long to do. But I think if you want this process to be considered fair and thorough, you just allows that. And just, I would respectfully request a motion tonight, that you will, within a certain period, that you will, we'll reveal that information to the board, that it will really help the integrity of these proceedings if you do.
So, Tom, what's the. Hey, Tom, in terms of, obviously, standard practice would be anybody that's involved or has any affiliation with any application would normally recuse themselves, whether that's engineers, attorneys, board members, whoever, maybe.
Not only normally, always recuse yourselves, and my, I do not have any conflict of interest. I know that board members have not expressed any prior involvement with the, with interests with these applicants. If you, they would like you to confirm that, if you wanted to confirm that, I have no problem with that. It's just a polling that you have no conflict of interest.
Okay. Yeah, so, and we're happy to.
The board members are sworn to comply with the statutes of the state of New Jersey, so they are very familiar with this. And Mr. Simmons can confirm he does not have any conflict of interest.
Okay. So, granted.
By conflict of media, your prior or current, your personal interest.
They know what, they know what conflict of interest are, so.
Well, I want you to define it. I want you to define it.
It's right in the statute. They know exactly what it is.
Is it a, is a prior representation?
Mr. Clark, we don't need to sit here and debate. We've already agreed that we will commit to, if we can provide, and if there is some reason that, you know, if there's any doubt with regards to a conflict of interest, the board is prepared to submit that. Case closed.
It just needs to be clear what you mean by that. Okay, that's all. It's right in the statute. It's in the MLUL. Mr. Chairman, we really need to proceed with our application. I mean, this is, it's required with the MLUL that any conflict of interest is disclosed prior to the beginning of testimony, prior to beginning of hearings. If that was an issue that would have been dealt with at the first hearing, you know, I just, this is, this is becoming a sideshow again.
Agreed. So, Mr. Clark, ask and answer.
Mr. Chairman, the only reason we bring this up, honestly, is because there has been a precedent in this case for the Sparta Township Land Use Board Attorney having represented this applicant in a prior manner.
And he recused himself from considering the zoning board application.
But he's also the zoning board attorney, the zoning board attorney. And he's the, both the zoning board attorney and the redevelopment attorney. So that's the foundation for this request.
And he recures himself?
Yes. He recused himself prior, the, the, prior to our appearance before the zoning board, but has not recused himself as part of the redevelopment process, which this is a redevelopment.
No, this is not a redevelopment application.
It absolutely is.
Nope.
All right, so.
It is not a redevelopment application. A redevelopment application is governed under the local redevelopment housing law, which this is not. This is governed under the MLUL. It's a, it's a planning board application, strictly a planning board application. There's no redevelopment plan. There's no redevelopment process. There's no designated redevenir. It's an application under an ordinance.
The town, the town attorney was brought in to opine on these type of matters that require reexamination of sites that are being provided for a new use. That's exactly what this is. And that's precedent. That's not debatable. We can't, we're not going to stand in front of you and debate this. It's, it's a matter of record, and that's the foundation of, of this request.
So, Mr. Dash, Hannah, we've, as we've kind of talked about, we will go through if there is a component that we need to do, whether it be by specific or specific statute that we need to follow.
There's nothing more that you need to do. None of you have conflicts of interest. If you are asked, being asked tonight, you have conflicts of interest in prior involvement or interest with the applicant. None of, none of you have any. I have none. Mr. Simmons can confirm he has none. Catherine can confirm she has none. If you would like to confirm it, please go ahead and say whether you have any conflict of interest with this application.
Yeah. Yeah, let's just, let's go down the line, and we'll, we'll put this to bed now.
Mr. Dash is incorrect. This is not a redevelopment application, and Mr. Keans had nothing to do with this application or redevelopment on this site. This site is a conventionally zoned site, zone for ED, is not a redevelopment ordinance, it is not a redevelopment plan. It was never deemed to be an area in need of redevelopment. It has nothing to do with redevelopment. He had no involvement with the ordinance. He had no involvement with the ordinance. He had nothing to do with this site. So, sir.
If we can, yeah, can we go down the line, and then we are going to move on, gentlemen?
I have no conflict of interest.
No conflict.
No conflict. Never had any discussion nor prior business dealings, so no conflict.
No conflict.
No conflict.
No conflict.
No conflict, no.
And I have no conflict.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Dash, Mr. Clark, thank you. At this point, I'd like to move forward with covering the actual hearing, and we'll start with Mr. Simmons' report. I believe we were on, please keep me honest here, Tom, I think 5C was where we left off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, sorry to introduce myself before again. Steve Goen, Giordano Heller, and Cisla, on behalf of the applicant. I believe you are correct that we left off on Mr. Simmons' report dated February 9th, 2022, on item 5. Is this? On, on, on item 5C, which deals with water quality. I'm going to have to ask my colleagues here, to my professionals, to speak directly into this microphone. You've got to get really close. So hold on one second. So to go through the, the rest of Mr. Simmons' letter, I do have, again, with me Tony Diggan, a professional engineer, the civil engineer for the project. I have Rob Valario, who was our geotechnical engineer, and I have Mike Green, who is our environmental specialist. All of them have been previously sworn and previously qualified, so we are just going to roll right through with the continuation of the presentation that we had last time. So, Tony, I'm going to turn this question over to you. The question has to deal with water quality. When you answer this, yes? Diggan? D-I-G-G-A-N. So, Mr. Diggan, if, if you could explain to the board the water quality component of the stormwater management plan, before you do, if you could, just for the benefit of the board and the public, just explain, sort of, maybe re-explain the components of the stormwater design that have to be addressed as part of a qualifying stormwater design, and what water quality means, and how this, how this project complies.
So NJAC 7.8 requires that you have immediate quantity reductions, water quality, and groundwater recharge. Under 5C here, I do agree with Mr. Simmons' statement. The, the project is not required to meet the 80% TSS removal, because we actually have a reduction of 50% of the motor vehicle surface area.
For the benefit of everybody, could you just explain TSS, the acronym?
TSS is total suspended solids. You'll see it in dirty runoff. Typically, you have to take 80% of that total suspended solids out of the stormwater. We actually do have, though we're not required to, we do have water quality management in the form of the base. We actually do have, though we're not required to, we do have water quality management in the form of the basin at the bottom of the site.
Move, next question has to do, sure.
Mr. Chairman, board members, I just want to correct one thing that I said at the June 1st meeting. We got a copy of the transcript, and I, I wanted to make sure this was corrected. If you recall, as Mr. Diggan was just indicating, in the basin at the bottom of the drainage area, they basically have several layers of materials to help with water quality. The other thing that they've got in that basin is an underdrain to take water away once it goes through those layers of material. One of the things that I had said was, based on my discussions with the staff in our office, this will not, not count towards water quality because you've got the underdrain. What I really meant to say, and I want to correct myself, was that wouldn't count for water recharge, because it wouldn't be allowed to go into the ground. It hit that underdrain, and it'd be taken out. So I just wanted to correct that for the, for the record. Thank you, Dave.
And I guess, moving on to that, to recharge, the next question in Mr. Simmons' report deals with groundwater recharge, and the comment is that recharge requirement has been satisfactorily addressed, and recharge occurs through the proposed dry wells. Can you just explain the design and how that requirement is satisfied?
So, under the new regulations, you're required to have small-scale practices of no larger than two and a half acre drainage areas. So what we did was we, we broke up the roof in two and a half acre sections. Roof water is considered clean, that is the water that's recharged into the cisterns under the truckport to meet the recharge requirement. And we're required to meet 100% of the recharge deficit from the existing condition to the post-condition, and that condition is met.
Next comment, E, deals with a maintenance manual, and can you just describe how that maintenance manual is prepared and what the requirements for that maintenance manual are?
Yeah, so, under 7:8, you're required to submit a maintenance manual, operation maintenance manual, that indicates where all the BMP and stormwater management infrastructure is located, and how that is to be maintained and inspected. That's then prepared by myself, signed, sealed, and submitted for recording.
So that doc, that, that is a document that gets recorded against the property post-approval, correct?
Correct.
The, the next question is, the next question is something that we have agreed to provide, which is great efficiency and capacity calculations of the proposed catch basins. And that's just something that we will provide to Mr. Simmons as a condition of approval, if approval is granted, correct?
Correct.
The next, again, comment G is something that we have agreed to revise the plan to comply, and that is that we have to provide paved access drives that are no steeper than 15% for each of the two basins. And we've agreed to revise the plans to accommodate for that, correct?
Correct.
And, and the purpose of those access drives is for what?
To maintain the basins.
The, the next comment, H, has to do with the pipes that are used to handle a 25-year design storm. Can you just speak to that and confirm what the applicant proposes to do to address that?
Yes, we, we spoke with the reviewer. We did update the, the pipe sections that were undersized, and we will comply with pipe sizing count for the discharge out of the basin to accommodate a 100-year storm.
And that really, that goes through the balance of Mr. Simmons' comments on stormwater. We did talk for a long time about it at the last hearing, but I just, before we move on to the next section of the letter, I wanted to confirm that there's no questions from the board and the board's professionals on stormwater-related issues.
Yeah, so, Dave, I'm sorry, Dave, any other further comments or anything with regards to, I guess, their feedback on the stormwater?
What I would say, Mr. Chairman, the, the applicant has agreed to make the revisions that we came up with based on the preliminary review or the initial submission of the stormwater calculations and their overall design. If you recall from the last hearing, I did mention that, for example, with the dry wells, they had done some preliminary soil moorings to see what the material was on-site, just to get an idea. But if you recall, I referenced DEP requirements that they do additional depth exploration below each one of the dry wells to make sure that it will function in accordance with what the DEP requirements are. Also, they're working on the groundwater mounting study to make sure that there's no issues that come up with that. Bottom line is, and they're also going to investigate information on the existing well that's on-site, as I understand it, check out water allocation permit, limits, and what the static levels were, just to verify the information and the assumptions they've used in their preliminary design. So I think it's fair to say that they're willing, as I understand it, to do the additional work. And in fact, there is additional work that they have to do to verify that the drainage design that they've come up with will in fact meet DEP requirements and the township's stormwater requirements as well. We have to receive that material, but my understanding is they're willing to do it.
Okay.
Dave, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Just because of, we had this conversation last time, and now, I just want to put it together. Maybe I'm, I'm confused a little bit. If there's an accident, and there's gasoline or anything else floating around on top of the water, on top of the, the catam or in the area, because there's trucks there, there's gonna be an accident sooner or later. Is this system gonna be able to stop that from going into the aquifer or from going off property?
Well, one of the things that we talked about, as I recall, at the end of the last meeting, or near the end of the last meeting, was that, number one, with regards to the dry wells, as the applicant's consultant mentioned before, the water going to those dry wells for recharge, which would go down towards the aquifer, if you will, is going to be the quote-unquote clean water from the roof of the proposed building. So, there's no, and he can confirm this, the applicant's engineer, there's no inlet grate where gasoline or some contaminant should go into those dry wells, because that should be basically a closed system from the leader pipes from the building to the dry wells. Now, with the rest of the storm drainage on-site, there's basically inlets that would be constructed normally in the curb line, the way the grading is done, and the water in the parking lot and the access aisles would sheet flow over towards those grates, get into the piping system, and that would all drain towards the proposed bioretention basins down at the lower end of the property. Now, one of the things that we talked about was, if there was a spill or something, it would probably follow the same path that the stormwater would, and get to the curb line, get in the inlets, and then go to the basin. Now, one of the reasons I wanted to clarify what I had said last month, that that big basin is basically not for recharge, is because they had that drain in the bottom that would take the water away. One of the things that I think Mr. Sylvester mentioned was, what about the installation of a liner in that basin? So that if there was a spill and some of the contamination got down to that basin, would it be able to be contained in that area? And I think we left off, and perhaps the applicant's engineer can address this, since that drain in the bottom isn't gonna be for recharge. If that was eliminated, and you had the liner in the basin, that would tend to contain most of the contamination. It would still be in the layers above the liner, but it would be a situation where if you had to block that outlet structure off and then excavate out some contaminated soil or whatever to ameliorate the problem, you have a better chance of doing that. And perhaps the applicant's engineer, I suggest, could address that right now.
Yeah. Mr. Diggans?
Yeah, Mr. Diggan is going to respond to that.
Yeah, so, there's a couple different things we can do, Mr. Simmons. Basically, you could, you could put another liner under the underdrain, if you like, but the underdrain would have to stay connected in order to receive that stormwater load from the media layer. We had also talked about putting hoods on the most downstream inlet that fed into those basins. Those hoods are, with their common use for oil gas separation. And then, as you know, if you're, if you're going through the media, it's gonna be contained in those top layers of media, and that can be in the O and M plan in terms of what to do if there's a spill.
Dave, to approach this, could that be made a condition that, that be confirmed that the spill, the hazardous gas spill couldn't be contained on the property? And not flow it off, and not go into the, not go into the aquifer?
Well, I think based on, based on what the applicant's engineer is suggesting with the additional liner and what have you, I think that's one of your best opportunities to contain that type of material. And certainly, you could have that as part of the operation and maintenance manual. That way, anyone who ever owned the property, being the chain entitled, they know what the requirements are.
Okay, now, you recommend that goes into the manual, or you recommend that that goes into a condition of the?
Both.
Both?
Both.
And that's fine, we would agree to that.
I'm sorry, sir. What did he say?
So the other thing I was gonna say.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm sorry. I just said that's fine, we can agree.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we'll agree to both. So it could be a condition of any approval, and, and it would be in the, in the operation and maintenance manual.
So again, I think it's fair to say that there's some revisions to the plans, the storm drainage calculations, the operation and maintenance manual, the various documents. They'll still have to be revised and additional information provided that we can review with the DEP.
Great.
True, and just following up on that point, Mr. Simmons, you know, we do have applications pending at NJDEP currently for various permits and approvals, some of which, some of which is going to bear on the ultimate design. And the intent, again, to come to you first for preliminary approval, so that we could get preliminary site plan approval, and then return once we've got all our outside agency approvals, including NJDEP. So, these types of things are gonna factor into the NJDEPs review when we come back in the final. Ideally, we have the justice commons sired out as well as the deputizes.
And I have, I have a question regarding, regarding the permit process to DEP. I, I think I mentioned, I just want to refresh my memory. Is it individual or a general permit you'd be filing for stormwater?
So, for the flood hazard area, it'd be an individual permit. The stormwater is reviewed as part of that permitting process? As is the soil testing?
I mean, you could technically have both systems permitted, one for individual, one for a general permit. What I'm concerned about is if you have your general stormwater just going under a general permit, the preventive measure's not gonna be necessarily reviewed as aggressively as an individual permit by DEP, unless I'm mistaken.
In this instance, there's no general permit for stormwater, but the entirety of the stormwater system, including all the backup, soil testing is reviewed by DEP as part of their.
And your design?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so that's all wrapped into the flood hazard IP.
Thank you.
If nothing else on stormwater, so this is a, a little bit of a departure, but I'm gonna go in order through Mr. Simmons' letter. So, the next section has to do with the lighting plan, and I believe Mr. Diggan does have the lighting plan with him, yes? Part of the site plan sheet? Or is it part of the site plan that was submitted?
It's, it's part of the site plan that was submitted. In fact, so, 6A talks about the hours of elimination. As you all know, we don't have a tenant right now, so we don't know which exactly, which security lights are gonna be needed for that tenant. But when we come back in for final approval, all those will be identified, and we'll comply with that request under 6A. Under 6B, we did talk with Mr. Simmons, and we did revise the wall-mounted packs over the rail loading, and we put canopy packs in there, and all that information will be provided upon receipt of it.
So, just going back briefly to the stormwater component, because I know we shifted gears a little bit. I just want to make sure and give the board an opportunity to ask any questions, specific questions that they've got, or recommendations on the stormwater component of it. So, John, I guess we'll kind of just start down there, and Diane, if you wanna just go through each board member, see if there's any specific questions?
Starting, John.
Uh, no questions at this time.
Uh, yes, just one. We're particularly concerned in this township with that light pollution. I'm not familiar with a canopy pack or the doors, the rolling hot doors.
Stormwater, Jim. Stormwater. We, we can answer this. Okay.
No, a whole bunch of questions for him.
Elimination. So, yeah, my, my question is, what is?
Sorry, what is the difference between what the current standards, that the current business has held to, and what the standards would be for the new business? Could you explain the difference of that? And what currently exists there as opposed to what will exist there?
Mr. Diggans?
As part of the, the sand wash and concrete operation, the owner has a NJPT's permit. He's required to, there's some detention requirement, but I can tell you that.
For the sake of the court reporter, can you just explain the GIFTES and the acronym?
Sure, it's, it's a non-point, uh, non-point pollution control elimination system. So, basically, he has a permit to operate his cement plant and discharge water, and he has to test it periodically. That discharge level, from a TSS standpoint, would be much higher than what we're proposing here. An existing condition. So the proposed condition is gonna have a much, much lower load.
And that's due to his process? Process require what, the, the reason why he's doing that did under a NJPT's permit is because of his process?
Yes.
Is that because it's grandfathered? Is that because it's grandfathered?
No. It's irregular, yeah.
The question was, is that because of the use, or is that because these new standards, new businesses are held to new standards? Could you explain that?
Sure. The, it's because of the, the type of use, the manufacturing use he's, he's doing there?
No further questions?
I have a question, and it's a recommendation, so I, I'm just putting it out there. So, there's a lot of new ordinance that talks to a campus like setting and different things of that nature. And also, when we're talking about the stormwater, the retention, the bioretention basin, is there a reason why you couldn't implement and add, would it add value also to do something similar to a rain garden around these? Would that help the process, is what I want to know, around the bio retention? And also, I would like to see, or recommend that there are additional filters for the, the water coming off. I know the water, it's different than the water coming off the roof. That's different. Obviously, it's a closed system. But I think it, it becomes more important when we're talking about what's going on on top of the pavement and by the rail and things like that. So, those are my two statements, and I just wanted to put them out there and see what you said.
Sure. Yeah, so we are looking at, well, actually, bioretention will have plantings in it. It'll be very similar to what's shown in the BMP manual, so there'll be water-tolerant plants, if you will.
Water-tolerant plants?
Yeah.
Okay, so you are planning on putting them in?
Yes.
Okay. And what about the additional filtration on top of the liners?
On top of the liners, you would actually have the bio infiltration media, which is a curated media, about 18 inches of sensibly sand mixed in with other soil that can grow plants. So, I mean, that's, that's what's proposed in there.
So, you, I'm talking to, also to Dr. Parker's point of making sure that we've got a lot of barriers in between what's on top and what's going into the aquifer. So my recommendation is that, in addition to this, I don't think we can ever be too safe. Additional filtration, looking into additional filtration that can go in above that in between it. So, in between the natural components that you have and the layer at the bottom, to make sure that we're putting barriers in between accordingly.
Gotcha.
Okay?
Sure.
Dr. Parker?
I think we're, I think what we're talking at is, you got, you got a liner, you got, you got your bio, you got your liner, you're engineering your, your containment, right? It's, it's at the point of whether it's gonna recharge or discharge, that you have some type of additional filtration.
Filter, yes.
Either leaving the site or being filtered, recharged back into the site. Then that's, the recharge area is an issue of, of trying to mitigate that, but also on your discharge point. I think where I'm hearing the recommendation is to just put some type of additional right before it exits either of those options, some type of filtration system.
Right.
Gotcha. I also point out, though, that it does discharge to a low-lining area to the, to the west of the basins before it leaves the site, and there's separation along all of that area between that and the aquifer.
Now, are those basins gonna be lined as well, capturing that, or is that gonna be filtered?
They're not, they're not basins. It's a compensatory flood storage area.
That's owned by the state?
Hmm?
That's one across the street owned by the state, right?
No, it's on, it's on the diamond ship property, below the rail.
And then it goes on the other side of that, ultimately, to the property that's owned by the state?
Yeah. Yeah, it discharges under the rail eventually, under Demrest.
Mr. Dagan, could you get up and show that on the map?
Yes.
I don't think it's on, is it?
Does that sound like it's chow? Yeah, it's just there. So, these bio-retention basins in the east are sequential, and they discharge to a point right here. This area here is a compensatory flood storage area. That discharge will come in here into an armored area, and then meander its way over here to its ultimate discharge point, under the rail, and then into the DOT-controlled property south of the rail. So, these are bio-retention basins, which discharge to this area here, and then meanders it over to a low-lying area here, and discharges where it does today, under the rail, and into the DOT-controlled property.
Do you know where it discharges after, when it enters and leaves the DOT property? Have you traced it further down?
Yeah, actually, I was out during IDA, and Rain Fox, it ran back into the basin a little bit. Eventually, I think after, some point after a 10-year event, it will go downstream under Demrest and the Culver.
That's why it's important that we have those extra filters on.
Ms. Harry, right here.
It goes down and over.
Sure.
Okay.
There's a pipe under the Demrest right here.
It's all dr. down.
No.
Is it over here somewhere?
Any other questions, Christine?
I haven't.
Dr.?
No, I know, I was gonna...
I'm good, thank you, those are my two things. So, you confirm you are gonna have a rain garden? You're gonna be using the correct plants? And also, we can...
So, I just wanna, yeah. And the reason for that is, a rain garden is much lower volume, this has much higher capacity.
Okay, so it's gonna be bigger?
Yes.
That's fine, okay. And also, a design that includes additional filtration, based on what I've reported before and what Mr. Celestino was talking about, so I think that's critically important, because it is going into that property and then out. So, I think we cannot be, you know, we have to make sure that we do everything we possibly can, so, those are my points, and Dr. Parker, I will turn it to you.
Yeah, please, please don't interrupt the proceedings, ma'am.
I just wanna know, sir, how high off the aquifer are we? Have I asked that question once before? And you told me somewhere around 12 feet. Is that still your answer?
I'm gonna bring up Mr. Valario to answer that, 'cause we do have that answer, and he's got the answer to another question, I think, Mr. Parker, you had asked in the last hearing. So, I'm gonna have Rob answer both, while he's up. Sure, if you can repeat the question, Mr.?
I wanna know how far off the aquifer this project is? And on these drains, when they get finished, how far off from the top of the aquifer are they?
Well, the top of the aquifer is a variable surface, depending on what is pumping in the area. For example, the limestone quarry, that begins to pump again, the aquifer is brought considerably down.
I'm talking about right now?
Right now, give or take about 12 to 15 feet.
Okay. That was your question last time. It just seems to me that we went through this and the PDRM, and this is just information, that we established a 25-foot barrier in this zone when we did the apply to Lake Grinnell. So, we should be consistent somewhere along the line here. You remember that?
You're saying, you're saying, right now, with the pumping that's taking place right now, you're still at 12 feet?
Yeah, so, and this is probably where it starts getting convoluted. For one, groundwater is not level.
We went through this the last time, you have surface, your aquifer, you have surface water, groundwater and your...
Yeah, and the aquifer is not confined, it's about the valley and fill aquifer, as well as the fractured ground, two elements of the overall aquifer system. And as a result, depending on the pumping, depending on the pumping that Frank is doing, depending on pumping from other discharge sources, those levels change. Now, the levels we're referring to is when Frank's operations were idle, 'cause that was the study period for stormwater, that's the 12 to 15 where it's stabilized. When he backed the production and drawing down, there's gonna be obviously a different separation. And of course, when this site is developed, there's spilling involved, so you're gonna have get a different elevation, which is ultimately what is being modeled and recorded as such.
What's that?
Close to the 12 feet, 'cause there's no rainwater.
So, the other question, Mr. Parker, from the last hearing, that I just wanted to, Rob, to answer for you, is that you had asked about the depth of the wells, so we do have that number, so, Rob, can you just explain that for the board? The depth of the existing wells for Diamond Ship? Sure. Frank has two wells on-site that are permanent. One is at 65 foot, the other one is about 152 feet. And again, these are public record, they can be researched by anyone, 'cause they're permanent.
Thank you.
The camera's 25 feet.
Dave answered my question, so I have no question.
Nothing on stormwater, this time, for me?
Well, I think we already hit the, our points on the lighting plan, which is a quick detour, so we can probably answer Mr. Murphy's question about lighting, if you wanna do that next, and then, Mr. Chairman, you can hold the board on lighting questions. So, Mr. Murphy, do you wanna just repeat that from Mr. Dagan, and we can address that?
Yeah, just as per... I purposefully am saying, and the people in the township are concerned about light pollution and spillage, and you had mentioned something about canopy packs. I've seen large warehouses from here to Harrisburg, some of which look like huge, kind of balls. So, concerned about the light spilling out all the way over to Route 15, can it be directed downward? What time is it, LED? Not upward, but downward onto the loading dock itself and not, and putting an eyebrow or something around it? Has that been defined under the plan?
Yes, yeah, they will be dark sky compliant, full cutoff, so there will be no glare, as it were, off the property.
Each loading dock door will have its own light?
No, dispersion is about one canopy, or, I'm sorry, one wall pack, for about eight, eight doors.
Really? Is it mounted on the side of the building?
Yes.
You have anything to add to me?
I don't recall off the top of my head, but it's in the application, in the site plan.
Anything else, Mr. Chairman, on lighting, from the board, board professionals?
Dave, any comments with regards to lighting?
Just on, Mr. Chairman, again, just some general characteristics of lighting, as far as what the hours of operation were. I know Mr. Ford had talked about, if I understood it correctly, remember correctly, two shifts, so I didn't know for the graveyard shift, if you will, if there would be the necessity to have all the lights on, or if certain lights could be turned off just for security purposes. So, that was the reason for that question. And as far as the wall pack units, my recollection is, they are downward pacing fixtures, but to be confirmed, to be verified.
Thank you, Dave. Rather than go through a formal roll call, I guess I'll just ask the, you know, if there's any questions, you know, please don't hesitate, just...
Yeah, I have one in regards to Mr. Simmons or to the applicant. Where the rail comes in, where the cars come in, is that lighting subject to the rail specifications different than, or is similar to what you proposed? Is it consistent with what you proposed for the entire site, including the rail, loading and unloading area?
The level of intensity would like to be a little higher on the rail operation, since the loading is going on on that platform, but only slightly higher.
Are you subject to meeting any requirements from the rail company itself, the rail lines, or...
We'll meet all rail requirements. It's part of them. Just to clarify, we have to stay within the confines of the ordinance, and Railroad will review this lighting plan as well.
If you pick up where Mr. Celestino, are those lights at the rail siding?
Those lights at the rail siding in the canopy itself, or are they all loaded?
No, they're in the canopy.
So, okay, so they will be spilling out in any direction other than that?
Correct.
And just so the board knows, one of the reasons I made that comment about the canopy lighting, it wasn't clear to me when we first looked at the preliminary plans, if the wall mount light fixtures were actually physically above the canopy, in which case it was gonna light up the top of the canopy and not underneath. So, my understanding from listening to Mr. Dagan is, the lighting in that area where the rail siding is, is gonna be underneath the canopy now?
Yeah, they were actually under the canopy to begin with, but yeah, they're under the canopy now as well.
Okay, so that was verified, so that'll help with some of the light spillage also.
Thank you, Dave. Any other questions with regards to lighting, from the other board members?
Okay. The next section has to deal with utilities. So, the first section under utilities is water. First comment is that the proposed buildings will be connected to the township water system. Mr. Dagan, why don't you just explain where we are at with that process and the proposal?
Sure. So, we're gonna connect to the town's water main, 12-inch main on Demrest, as a single point of connection, as requested by the MUA. We have had one round of review, and we've submitted our water allocation for their inclusion in the master permit.
Then we've gotta comment that the size of the water lines and the fire protection line has to be reviewed and approved by the sport attached water department and construction official, which, I mean, obviously, we agree, you can confirm it.
Yeah, that will all be provided, probably time of final, when we have water flow pressures and demands for warehouse buildings from the MEP.
So, that addresses the second part of that question, which is, that one of the things we're going to be required to do as part of the permitting process for connecting to the township's water system, is to take flow tests, confirm pressures available for both domestic use and fire protection. Is that correct?
Correct.
Mr. Dagan, can you, just as it relates to utilities, can you walk us through just a little bit? I know this is a little bit off of, you know, you're certainly gonna be working with the water department to get verification approvals, everything that you're going to need. In terms of the size and scope of this project, as it relates to water and water usage, can you guys talk a little bit about that? I mean, I think one of the major concerns that a lot of us would have is, again, if there's a fire or something like that, is there enough water to supply to help support this? And again, I know that's not a direct applicant question, per se, it's more of a town question, but I'm just, based on the way you're designing it right now, can you just talk to us a little bit about that?
Yeah, so, while there is a single point of connection, the system is looped around the buildings, and there are fire hydrants on-site, obviously, shorter than the length of a hose pool for the fire department. If there is not adequate fire pressure, we will have to design a fire pump so that there is adequate fire pressure. So, if the pressure exists, we're fine. If it doesn't, then we have to do a fire pump and have that pressure developed on-site.
Okay, and that would be coordinated directly with the fire department?
And the MUA.
Okay.
And it will become likely part of an application for final site plan approval here, so this board will have a chance to review it, 'cause ideally, like, or other outside agency approval, we've gone through that permitting process first before coming back for final.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one follow-up, if I may. With regards to the two existing wells that are on the property that were identified tonight, my assumption is, and I'd just like to get this confirmed, is that those two existing wells will be sealed? Correct, that is, that's the intention, yes. Okay. I just wanted to verify that, because again, when you're talking about any kind of cross-contamination, those wells are sealed by a licensed New Jersey well driller, and they're capped off and out of the picture, then that becomes a non-issue.
Great.
And Mr. Simmons, that's a great point. The purpose of those wells being put in originally was part of your due diligence, and/or your...
The purpose of those two wells was for the existing sand and gravel operation. Those wells are permitted for use with that operation.
All right, and then, with the earlier testimony that there may be some additional environmental, outside environmental work being suggested, would be provided, would you allow providing access to the other parties that may need access if they wanted to?
I think we'd rather have that conversation offline, if you don't mind.
Before you seal them, and then they find out they wanna drill their wells, and we're holding up another four to eight weeks, 10 weeks, drilling wells, so, it was just for all parties' interest in that, before you seal them?
Understood.
All right, thanks.
Well, we're not, I mean, realistically, we're not sealing them until we start construction, so it might be a...
All right, thank you.
Mr. Dagan, I just wanna go back, you keep saying MUA, but what you mean by that is the part of township water department, right?
Correct.
When you say water utility, MUA, okay.
I might as well ask, before I move on, is there anything else on water? Existing water, new water? None? I'm gonna move on to sanitary sewer, which we have talked about on a number of different occasions, but just so we can be consistent here and finish up Mr. Simmons' letter. So, Mr. Dagan, can you, the first comment is that the proposed buildings will be connected to a new septic system. So, why don't you just, again, for the board, explain where we're at with the septic system, what we have in place currently, what's included in this proposal?
Sure. So, there's a county approval for, we call seven colon nine, the statute, for a septic system to serve the proposed project. That's been in place, the county inspected, witnessed those wells being drilled, there is a design in place for that. And I think there was a question, too, as to how the offices would be connected. On my plan, there's no line shown in the truckport, that's gonna be an NEP decision, kinda like a value engineering decision, whether we run those under the slab or out of the truckport. So, that's why there appears to be no connection to the offices to the north, they're in fact connected to the wet well, if you will, at the bottom of the site, which then pumps to the drain field, and I can point that out.
Yeah, if you could point that out on the map, that would be helpful.
So, west of the building, along Demrest Road, is the area reserved for wastewater recharge. There were geotechnical evaluations conducted there, witnessing that county as part of their approval process. In general, there are office blocks in the corners of the building, which will drain to a wet well down here, which will then be pumped, could be dosed, we don't know yet until the final design is completed, and then pumped up to a dispersion field in this recharge area, and then it recharges in the ground.
And what was the capacity of that, Mr. Dagan?
Seven colon nine capacity is 2,000 gallons per day. This is the wastewater recharge area, adjacent to Demrest, the office blocks in the corners of the buildings. They are connected to a wet well here, which is then pumped up to the drain field, and then thereby recharges into the soil.
And just so we're clear for everybody, the seven colon nine, Tony, that's a reference to NJAC code? NJAC regulation, I'm sorry?
Correct.
I think we went... I think we went over, Mr. Simmons' comment three, which is just the location of the septic field. So I'll pause here and ask if there's any questions relative to septic design sanitary.
Relative to the existing condition, that area identified is higher than the area of the existing site. In the proposed condition, it'll be slightly higher.
And what was the purpose in place for putting it there? Or the placement of it?
There was a, there was a septic field in that area before, where they had looked at it before, so it's out of the development footprint, it's good soil over there, primary reason.
And, Mr. Diggin, in terms of the pump that you guys will have, I guess dispersing it or bringing it back up to the field, what, how is that operated? Electric, is it?
It would have a float system, the electric pump, wet well fills up, pulls the float up, and then the pump triggers on and then injects the wet well.
So, and what would typically be just a backup system? Like if for some reason that were to fail, where would all of that go?
You'd have another pump as well.
So there'd be two pumps?
Yeah.
Okay. No questions?
Two pumps and an emergency alert.
Was there any other alternatives to hook up to other sanitary systems versus doing that sewage field here?
No. There's no capacity. We're not, President Sewer Service says there's no capacity to hook up presently. And there's no infrastructure either.
With that system, what's the maximum in terms of employee counts that you can have? I mean, we're basing it off of that, right?
Eighty-five.
Yes, that's the one. I know Mr. Collins knows this by heart now. That's the one where we keep saying 100, but I think he corrects us to say 80 with a certain amount of transient employees.
I'm sorry, say it one more time, Mr. Go.
We keep saying 100 employees, but I think Mr. Collins has corrected us every time to say it's somewhere around, it's somewhere like 80 employees permanent and 20 transient that we can accommodate with the current system. And then again, if we got a larger system approved, a larger septic system approved at the county level, at the EEP level, then we would have to come back for an amended site plan or we would be part of our final site plan application. Until such time as there is infrastructure surrounding our property or we are, and we're put into a sewer service area, there's no opportunity to connect the sewer, so we're limited to either this smaller septic system or a larger one, subject to obtaining.
Okay, thank you. So if there's another, other questions on sewage, I can move on, Mr. Go.
Sure. So the next section deals with the landscape plan, so I think, Mr. Diggin's going to just walk through these three comments.
Yeah, so we talked with Mr. Simmons and we resubmitted a updated landscape plan on March 25th that addressed some of his concerns here, and I'll point out what they were. The, we weren't taking credit for existing offsite forested area, however, the shading in black and white is a little confusing to read, so we updated that. He, in 8B, indicated that the five-foot landscape buffer, he believed that was adequate to meet the requirement. And then the last one, he identified an area that could use more buffer because the forested area was a little thin, in his opinion. And that area is just above the trailer parking on the west side, and we added newer plantings in there.
I think that's all we have really to address the landscape comments, but if the board has questions.
I think there are, there are some issues that you had brought up with regard to the buffer, the planned buffer and the fact that, I think the request came up that there needs to be, or in the ordinance states that there needs to be X amount of buffer, and there was, if we look here in the actual letter that you had sent back, it talks about the fact that you were, you are recommending that the existing buffer there basically fulfills that requirement of the buffer. Correct?
That was for 8B.
For what?
His comment, 8B?
Yes. So my question is, in looking at this picture and looking at the drawing, you know, I see two huge warehouses, but at the buffer, what you're showing right there is what's already there right now, correct?
Correct.
And there's, it already has been identified that part of that does not have a buffer. So the buffer breaks, as you identified in the letter, so that needs to be rectified as well. So there needs to be additional there.
We did rectify. That was the area I pointed to. If you look at the hatch that area for the septic area, north of that area, we added in newer plantings off the side of that trailer parking area. And if there are, upon Mr. Simmons' further review, if there's further comments about the buffer, we'll work with him and make sure that that's satisfied.
Mr. Simmons, you've been looking at this and you have it in your company, the landscaping plan. From Route 15, is this landscaping, we're talking about the landscaping, I'm sorry. From Route 15, is this adequate to block? And is it adequate from the Linecrest Road?
I, I still have to review the revisions that they made to the proposed landscaping, but for example, the additional material to the north side of where the septic area is, that's not going to, just looking at it preliminarily, that's not going to block anything.
That's not going to block anything, no. That's why I was asking for the other direction.
And I think you have to keep in mind that the fact that the building is approximately 45 feet high and the landscaping materials that they're proposing, I'm sure, aren't that high.
Not yet.
Not yet. It would take a considerable amount of time, and we'd have to have our landscape architect look at the species of materials that they're proposing to see in fact how high they do get upon maturity. So there's some review that has to be done on that. As far as the view from Route 15, if you're on Route 15 going south and you look to the right towards the site, I don't, off the top of my head, think that it's going to block the view of everything, no.
So you're saying, I have a quick question that I need clarification on. So we're talking about buffers, we're talking about, again, going back to what the ordinance states, which is clear that it's a campus-like setting, the ordinance is very clear that that's what it's supposed to be. And in looking at this, it's problematic to see that, you know, there's bays in the front, different things we could talk about when we get to the architectural component. The ordinance is also very clear to say that any building that is rail-dependent within 500 feet of the line gets the benefit of a higher impervious coverage and higher roof. So where I'm struggling and I need clarification is, I understand the building, A, the smaller building, why is the second building, the 500,000, 550,000 square foot building, why is that building getting the same benefit when it doesn't directly offload from the rail at all?
So the building B actually has cross-connection with building A. There are drive-in doors to offload from the rail across the truckport in the building B.
But that means it's warehouse, warehouse-dependent, not rail-to-building-dependent. And the, that's why I'm struggling here, and what I'm saying is, if we go back to the ordinance, it says it needs to be rail-dependent. Building B is not going from the rail to the building. Building B is going from the rail to building A, and then on a conveyor belt, you know, you had testified to how it's getting there. So that second building is not rail-dependent. And therefore, my question is, why, if it's not rail-dependent, is it getting the benefit of higher impervious coverage and also higher roof height? And that also goes to a smaller footprint on the site, keeping it in line with what the ordinance also states, which is a campus-like environment.
I think we also have a rendering from Route 15 showing the developed site and that existing tree line, so we can provide that to the board as well.
But the question, the question that I, that's not the question that I, I mean, I appreciate that you will add more, that's the first thing I brought up. But the second thing I brought up, I think, is more, more important to be answered, which is the larger of the two buildings, why that building is getting the benefit of what the, of the ordinance, because it is not rail-dependent and it is still taller and it is still larger impervious coverage and it does not, that's not what the ordinance says. The ordinance says it has to be rail-dependent. So going from the rail to a smaller building and then being wheeled over to the bigger building is not going from the rail to the building. That's not rail-dependent. So that's why I'm asking, why is one, why is the second building, I need to have that clarified.
In our view, the... Those are really good questions, Corps Member Quinn, and for the applicant, Mrs. Quinn has explained that the ordinance requires the rail dependency and it also requires rail use. Building B does not technically have rail dependency like building A does, it doesn't have really rail use. And it's pretty impractical to think about something coming off a train car, going into building A, going through building A, then down a ramp, and then across a driveway, and then up a ramp, all like worklifts to go to building B. So looking at these plans, it looks like you need to make one building, and it would be a better arrangement to have only one building. So we recommend that to you.
Or two, but it needs to be, the footprint needs to be smaller so that it's not showing the benefit because it's not conforming to what the ordinance says, which is being rail-dependent.
I would actually add that the ordinance specifically says located adjacent to the railroad or a rail siding, and the second building isn't even. The first building is.
I think it goes on to say located within 500 feet.
Within 500 feet.
At 500 feet.
That would be the last sentence, but we have to...
I don't believe it's over 500 feet. Just from looking at the plans, I believe it's over 500 feet. I think it's about 530 almost. The distance of building B to the rail line is greater than 500 feet, correct?
No.
Can you, can you provide the distance from the, from the facade of building B to the rail line? Not just to where the trains are coming in, but where they'd be offloading.
Would they be offloading, would they be in excess of 500 feet?
Correct. I don't think it needs, the ordinance intends to say within 500 feet of just a rail line, of any, of any portion of the rail line.
So we, I think the applicant should focus in on this before the next hearing and try to assess one building as the better alternative. The complexity of two buildings is not worth the effort. So the reality is that the proposal as shown now doesn't meet the ordinance standard of rail-dependent and rail use for building B. So the best way to address that is to go to one building with the siding connected to that building. There may be other things that I noted...
Or just bring down the size of the...
That may work, but it doesn't deal with the fact that, that the coverage and the height for the site, this is a one-site deal, so you don't, you don't have an averaging authorization, you have the right to use the rail-dependent use, if you are rail-dependent use that uses the rail, and it doesn't appear to be that at this stage in his design. So there's another factor that's probably worth pointing out to Mr. Diggin now too, which is, he keeps calling it a trailer parking area in the front yard, and the ordinance requires that storage in the ED zone be in the rear yard or side yard and adequately screened from view. It's my opinion as the board attorney that the parking of trailers is not parking, it is storing trailers, and it especially shouldn't be stored in the front yard. So the trailers, the 50-trailer storage space really needs to comply with the ordinance and needs to be in the rear yard or side yard, and it needs to be screened from view. And that's what everybody does in the ED zone. So that's a factor that really needs to be changed. And then there's a third factor, which I think should be considered by the applicant in this course of this, and that is, Dave Simmons pointed out, and also the review report by Catherine Zermatt pointed out, that the retaining wall of ordinance is a requirement that the retaining wall be no greater than four feet in height. And we don't find any provision in the ordinance that accepts commercial or industrial properties from that standard. It also says there shall be no retaining wall within the first 25 feet of the front yard. So those two geometric, that geometric change results in a stepping requirement for the, for the wall, so that there's no wall 25 feet from the right of way, and then there's stepping back at four feet in height and a distance between walls of a minimum of, I think, the height of the wall to the next wall. That, that means that the buildings can't really be where they're shown on the site plan. So those three factors ought to be revised in their plans.
I think that also goes to the campus-like setting. So I spent a lot of time driving all over the place to warehouses all around to try to get an idea, especially the ones in Sparta. You do all conform to a campus-like setting, so when you are pulling into them or pulling around or you're driving past them, I think that's why a lot of people were, you know, were surprised when they learned how many warehouses we actually have in Sparta, because when you're driving down, they look like businesses, they have very nice fronts, and all the loading and the trucks and all that stuff are in the back. So one of the things that's going to make this adhere to what the ordinance says is to get the spots for all the trucks and whatnot and keep all the business in the back of the house and keep the front, again, like a campus-like setting. So that was, those are my topics to bring up. I'll pass to you, Dr. Parker. Do you have any questions?
I just want to reiterate, because nobody touched on it this time, but I did bring... Oh, I'm sorry.
Here.
There you go. Last time I mentioned about, we talked about the railroad use, and this whole thing is based on the use of the railroad. And my, I tried to go back on the minutes in my notes. We talked about the railroad, you said, or at least I remember the testimony was that there's a switch on the property and that the applicant was going to build a spur from the line to the building under the, using the regulations of the railroad, in other words, up to standards. But my question is, this is all very good, except is the railroad going to service it? Do you have a letter saying they're going to service it? Because at this point, the railroad does not service that type of material in this area. They only serve, do other things. Now, will they take dry goods and... Now, will they take dry goods and bring it in and at what rate will they bring it in? And because the whole ordinance, the whole basis of this thing was to give the, and that's why the height requirements and the impervious coverage was to use the railroad. So maybe we should talk about some minimums of goods coming in and out that are using the railroad.
Well, we can talk about that in traffic. Of course, we're talking about that in traffic because you don't know what's rail to rail, truck to rail, rail to rail, so that's all traffic.
Because the whole thing is otherwise is, we're not-
Yep.
It's not us laying why we changed or why we put the amendment in on this particular, those particular properties. Because that was to be used as a rail thing. That was the reason for the height, because we were spelled, we were informed of trains and we were told that we were going to have a percent, high percentage of material coming in and a material coming out. So if you don't know the tenant, so you can't answer that question, then we have to put some kind of regulations on there with your minimums on. I still don't understand how you're putting this much money in and don't have a tenant, but that's your problem. You have to do, we have, we'll have to discuss how much minimum is going to come in and out on the railroad. And that one other building is just not railroad dependent. That has to go under completely different rules, if at all. But that's your design.
Okay.
I think I blew that one. Go ahead.
Ted?
Ted?
Questions?
Do you have any questions?
No. Oh. So-
We are, and I would be happy to get back to that if you have a landscaping question.
Well, I think before jumping into that, you know, I just reaffirm and, you know, I think both based on what you're hearing from the members and the attorney is we're recognizing that there are some, I think, material design flaws that are not congruent with the ordinance and the specifications of that. So my, my recommendation, like, again, I'll, I'll let you comment, but I, I think that's the, that's what you're hearing from the board this evening.
So, so I'm bringing back Mr. Ford to address those two points that we just raised. I, I don't know that we're going to say anything more about landscaping other than who, who will add more landscaping. That's how we started this discussion. I think there's some more important issues that I need, I think there's some more important issues that we need to address and so Mr. Ford's going to address those now.
As I said, I've said many times in the past that, that my view of this project when, when I saw it was the functionality of the rail. Very important. And if you look at the design as it's proposed right now or shown right now, that's just because of the functionality of the depth of the buildings, okay? It is absolutely my intention always, 100% to have the entire campus-like setting rail served, so rail dependent. I totally understand what you're saying about they're not connected, so it really, you know, appears that one building is not rail dependent. And Mr. Parker, to hear you loud and clear and I hear everybody loud and clear is that I have every intention that all square footage of this building is by rail dependency and need for, for rail, for, for inbound freight. As I talked about in the past, of consumer goods, those type of products that are clean and food and good for the environment, all those type of things. So to answer your question, if you quickly, I have no problem with having our design team revisit the site plan, as, as you're recommending clearly, and looking towards making rail dependency for either both buildings because the depth of them, I mean, you'd have, you'd have like an 800, you know, to 1,000 foot deep building. It's, it's, it's not functional from that, from, from a warehouse perspective. That's more of a manufacturing-type use, which is not permitted. So, so it was just a functionality concern of how this design came about from that, but knowing that, as, as I've always said, that the tenants that I plan on putting into this facility are rail dependent, but absolutely loud and clear, so there's got to be rail, what you're saying, to both buildings in this case. And I have no problem with revisiting that and being clear and completely, of course, transparent to, to, to our revised plan, to, to the public, to address that concern. Is that a fair way to view it?
I, I, I mean, I think so. I mean, ultimately, I think you understand the board's concern, but-
I'd like to pick up what Dr. Parker had said. In doing that, you're going to have to have some basis to justify your design in the form of minimum quantities or any, and-
Rail.
Right, and Dr. Parker, I hear you.
Rail.
I mean, the, the cost of putting the rail in alone is expensive, as you know, whether it's for one building or both buildings, there's a cost factor to that and it's, it is a large factor in rail, in the, in the rail community in general for movement. So believe me, when, when I, you know, agree with you 100% that having a user in there that's going to switch, you know, two cars a, a year or something, that's not a benefit to the, the development. It's not what the, the ordinance is, is maintained or, or designed to do-
Bless you. God bless.
Just as much. And for that investment, from my perspective, or from the, from the investment of, of, you know, perspective of an investor, is that there would be no point in doing it. So believe me when I say is that I, I hear you loud and clear. I know what the ordinance, you know, says from that perspective. This was just a, a matter of functionality. If you couldn't make it one huge building or one big building with rail in on the side of it because of the depth and functionality, that would be much more for like a manufacturing type use, which is not the intended use here in a warehouse. So absolutely loud and clear and we will gladly come back before, before the next proceeding with some, some major tweaks to this, especially from the rail perspective and, and also hearing Commissioner Quinn, your other concerns about, thoughts about, you know, what the campus-like setting looks like and the intended use of that.
And the other points that were raised by Mr. Collins, I think we would incorporate all of that. If we're, if we're talking about going back and making changes, you know, we want to, we want to address all of those concerns that were raised.
And could you really get, we would really like to see, at least I personally, I don't know if the rest of the board, but I'd like to see something in writing from the rail company saying that yes, they will do the service and yes, they will be able to get in there more than once a month.
Well, we said we were going to make that a condition.
Sure, yeah.
At the last meeting, it was said that that was going to be a condition of approval.
Utilities of any form or fashion, including wherever it's, do what we call will serve letters, as you know.
Okay.
And so, yes, I will request of them that they will serve it. They, they do presently serve it, as you know, for a different, different type of use.
And you're already using it now on the site, correct?
Correct.
So this is not some-
No, it's not new.
It's already there, it's already being used by, I mean, the line itself, but the spur you already have, you're already using it on the site.
And even in this design, which I'm being told by you and I absolutely am up for that challenge is to, is to redesign it, you know, cha-change it so it's, it is truly, you know, what, what the ordinance says clearly and we will do that, number one. And number two, it's just as much as we've already, you know, been in some very preliminary designs with the railroad from that operational perspective, the type of, of commodities that they want to move. And, and it's consistent with what I've always said and being more the consumer goods-type products, paper, plastic, food grade type products, that kind of stuff of what the intention is because it's the cleanest and, and the best for the operation overall too. So thank you for those.
And while we're, while we're on, just on that and now that you're talking about going back, I would just ask, please, that you also, in addition to being mindful of conforming to the actual ordinance, which is the concerns that we're bringing up here tonight-
Sure.
That you actually also are being mindful of the feedback from the community as well-
Absolutely.
In shrinking the blueprint and, and maybe, you know, this is the first application of its kind. You know, we have concerns, we share them, the people in the community have concerns, we've never done, and this is the first one that's come in.
Sure.
So please be mindful of that. I would just ask you to please also be mindful of that when you're going back and redesigning this before you bring it back.
Is, is that a request, Commissioner?
That is a request.
You got it.
It's a little more than a request, but I mean, yeah.
We will, I'll say to everybody in the room, we will absolutely-
Thank you.
Look at this with the revision that's been requested of us. And we're, I mean, and we're here to, to, to adhere to what, what has been set forth, so.
All right, and I would just like to, I would just like to echo that as well and in your design that it doesn't compromise all the previous discussions with the concerns about the stormwater-
Correct. No, it's-
Bill prevention measures, et cetera, that we discussed earlier, that, that all stays intact regardless of the size change-
Yes.
Et cetera.
Right. I mean, as to like the, the basis, that kind of stuff and, and how the rail actually comes in, you know, to shift a little bit those kind of things as we're into this process with the DEP. Sure, there's a, there's a design factor to that and the DEP, you know, is the highest standard by the state when it comes to all these controls and concern about environmental and concern about off, you know, potential spill is, is Dr. Parker's brought up, that's all part of this DEP process. And, and, and as we know, and I know it's been difficult for, for everybody in this room and being fair is that to, 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 a little bit of the unknown, is this, can be a scary thing. So once again, this is what we always felt was, you know, the preliminary review of this, having to go through the DEP process is, is every one of the topics that you're bringing up from, from a control standpoint, from stormwater, from all those things are as high as the state level, that New Jersey's very good about, about that compared to other states, that, that there are ultimate controls for all this. So, so yes, I, I'm hearing you loud and clear.
A slightly different question.
Thank you.
What's the, what code is the rail that you're putting in? Like, what's the weight of the rail?
Wait, it's, the industrial standards is, is-
Industrial standards, not, not the light rail standards.
No, no, it's, it's 110 plus.
Okay.
So it could be as high as 130.
Chairman, I just have additional, a question and a recommendation.
Sure.
In, in looking at the redesign of the site, you know, the number of dock doors that are proposed, I understand that it's probably speculative, but it, it appears that it gives the intention of, of something that's more truck dependent because there are, you know, quite a bit. The ratio works out to be about even less than one per 5,000, which is quite high for what should be rail dependent use. So I understand it's speculative as far as attracting tenants and their needs, but what I would recommend is in order to, you know, make the rail dependency work or at least, you know, as you're designing this to, to be rail dependent, that you, you look into reducing the number of dock doors to something, to a ratio that's a little higher.
And that would be under respective of the basis with more rail dependency, you know, shall we say, completely adhering to, 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 to the ordinance. Catherine, I mean, you would know, it's just that, that's from a warehouse perspective, it, it's going to naturally then reduce the, the amount of truck docks. Cause, cause you're, we, I haven't designed it in my head yet, but, but if you're losing, you know, a side of the building per se because we're making both buildings rail dependent or a, a hybrid of that design, reducing some of the footprint, and I heard you, Commissioner, very well, it's going to then affect that need because as, once again, this is a warehouse of dwell. So that means products that go in here, food, paper, plastic, whatever it might be, it's, it's not going in one door and out, you know, indoor and one out, you know, the next. That's the reason why the height in any standard, anywhere in northern New Jersey, anywhere in the country nowadays, that's why these warehouses are built to a higher clear height internally to the building. So for that, knowing if, if it was just a true transfer-type terminal, which has, you know, been talked about and I, and I know that, we wouldn't need, we, we could do it 18 foot clear or, or 20 foot clear or whatever it might be. But that's the reason why is because of the need for the dwell and, and that being said. So also hearing you, you know, Catherine, is that, is that understanding that, that that would naturally reduce the amount of truck docks that are either proposed or, or potentially for the future?
And the parking and storing of the cabs in the back.
Dan, I have, I have one question.
Let's, we've talked about it before, is that there's no-
That's what I'm saying. I'm just reminding you because that was something that we talked about before.
Trailers, yeah.
My apologies. I don't know if it's for Mr. Collins or Mr. Ford, but then all your traffic analysis, your studies would need to be adjusted or modified based on that? Your redesign's going to, your, your traffic study's based on what's being proposed now?
The, the, the-
It's all going to-
Wait, here. The, the, the traffic impact study has been done, once again, done by a national standard that's determined by this, the federal and the state DOT.
Okay.
That standard is driven only by the square footage of the building, not by docks, not by trailer parks. And that's a, in national institutes that Adam, our traffic engineer-
So your redesign will be equal, if, if you change the square footage of the redesign, then obviously the order of the study would be adjusted.
It would just be lower.
Okay. But, but when we look clearly into what Commissioner Quinn has, has requested of the public is to say if there's a reduction in the size of the building, it's going to reduce-
Traffic.
The, the, the traffic. The counts.
Maybe we could ask, well, you're going to need to, obviously after you do the redesign, talk to your traffic team or else you did your study as well.
That's, yeah, that's something that we consider as well.
As we, as we will, as we will.
An overall redesign, it's a preliminary review.
Okay.
So any other questions that the board has? I know we've, we've taken a big jump.
I still have my landscape question, a little bit touchy, not a question by the tree, but I would call-
John, if you would do that and then we'll do maybe a 10-minute break as I-
How tall is the, is the yellow, is the yellow, I think it's a sand tower currently on site?
We, we think it's about 80 feet.
Okay. I just wanted to use it for, as a barometer for how high the building will be in terms of visibility from Route 15.
So approximately half.
Mr. Goen, I, I heard your answer, but- Mr. Goen, I heard, I think you answered that question. Can Mr., can Mr. Diggan like give us a, the actual height of the existing structure? I think he called it a sand tower, but I-
That's what it looked like to me, like, like a cement tower.
What is the height of the cement tower?
I believe the cement tower's about 80 feet tall.
And what el-, do you know what elevation it starts at on ground level, but with sea level elevation, elevation above sea level, the ground at the-
I, I do not, but as I mentioned before, we, we do have a rendering prepared for Route 15 showing the relative elevations of the buildings and the fence road that's between Route 15 and the adjacent field. So we're happy to submit that and all that meets the scale.
Okay. Yes, that would be helpful and, but wouldn't you have a couple graphic map that tells, tells you what, like, doesn't your survey say the elevation at the ground of the cement tower? I, I just want to get a sense of how, how high it is relative to what the height of the 50-foot-high building was.
I'm happy to tell the light towers of station-
Against sea level.
The height of the station.
I had several questions along Mr. Collins' lines, but I don't know where I went.
It doesn't matter which category. Maybe we should take a break, at least for the bathroom.
Yeah, let's do a quick bathroom break. We'll adjourn for 10 minutes and come back.
Please, thank you.
Forty-five feet.
So we adjourn one.
Tom says, I guess they're going to make a proposal to, 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 to-
Wait a second. It's not mine.
Hey, everybody, we're going to come back into session. So if everyone will please take their seats. Mr. Goen, I understand you wanted to ask for-
Well, so after that little discussion before, I think it would be appropriate, I'm sorry, so, so after that discussion that we just had before, I think it would be appropriate if we requested to adjourn the proceedings now. Give us a chance to incorporate what we just talked about in front of the board in a revised plan, resubmit it, come back, present it. At this point, you know, any testimony that we provide is to a plan that basically we just told you is going to be revised substantially, so it seems inappropriate to continue. So that's what we're going to request to adjourn.
Okay, so-
Mr. Goen, do you, do you have a date when?
Uh-uh.
Please, Collins.
Mr. Goen, you have a date, you have, we, we would like, the board needs at least 21 days to review revised plans so that our professionals can review them. So thinking about producing revised plans and submitting them at least 21 days before a, a scheduled public hearing, when would you like to say that you expect to submit the revised plans and what date? Well, then, then we'll talk about a date for continuation of the hearing.
Right, so why don't we, if we could, Mr. Collins, can we just say for now that it'll be continued on August 3rd, which is the next, the next, well, it's the next board meeting after your next meeting in July, but we've got to submit revised plans.
Yeah, and we'll need 21 days for the professionals to review those.
It's going to be cutting it pretty close.
Could we do a special meeting?
Yeah, that's not enough time, Mr. Goen. So why don't you and Mr. Diggan sort of come up with a realistic expected date for the submission? date for the submission, and then let's just schedule the date for the hearing, 21 days, approximately 21 days after that, using, using our first Wednesday of a month, or our third Wednesday of a month. We meet twice a month, and we can-
You have something to say, if you don't really want a redirection-
Please, please, no, no comments, please. Ma'am, please.
Quiet.
We're, we're trying, ma'am, you're, you're out of order. You are out of order.
Where are the officers?
And, and if you're going to continue to shout, you will be asked to leave.
So, so, Mr. Collins, I agree, but would, just for the purposes of noticing, can we, well, I guess we-
Yeah, I want, I want to get a date certain, but I don't, and we could always postpone a date-
Well, that's what I'm wondering if we could do-
But August 3rd isn't realistic, and I don't want to have a meeting just to carry the notice, so.
Well, what about August 17th?
Yeah, well, can you have the plans done by July 26th? Or whatever 21 days is from the 17th.
27th.
27th, I was, I missed, I would give you-
Very close.
I'd call you one more day.
Yeah, so that, that, that's fine.
So, you would, you would have your revised plans. You sure you want to, sure Mr. Diggan can promise it?
Well, I'm making him promise it.
It's, it's, it's easier to miss.
It's not, I, I, I don't, yeah, I don't have to draw the plan. So, I, I, let's say August 17th, and obviously, Mr. Collins, if we, if we run into trouble with that date, we'll let you and Board Secretary know if we have to carry it, we'll, we'll deal with noticing at that time, but we're going to, we're going to try to hit that date.
Well, let's, let's see how the board is on August 17th. A lot of times we try to take a break and all of this, but what are the board members? We'd like to have you, as many of you here as we can, we have nine members. Are people available on August 17th for a continuing hearing? Do you want to-
Yes, is there any, any sort of conflicts with anybody on the board with regards to an August 17th meeting?
I know I'm due tomorrow.
I'll be here.
Yeah, okay, I think that, that would work.
Okay, so then, August 17th will be the continued date, but the plans, revised plans shall be submitted to the board by July 27, 2022. The hearing, if the board is ready, the hearing would be carried without additional notices to August, I'm sorry, August 17th at 7:00 PM here, and the applicant will submit the revised plans by July 27, 2022.
So, moot.
So, does that-
So, need a motion? Yeah, you didn't want a motion?
I don't need a motion.
No.
If the chairman says that's what we're doing, then we're doing that, and the chairman determines whether we're hearing anything more tonight.
So, I guess in lieu of, the plans will, will adjourn for this evening. If there is-
I'm here in public commentary. Quiet.
There's no testimony, there is no testimony on the hearing.
There's, as we've covered early on, this is, the public portion of the comments and stuff are, are, we're carrying this meeting forward. So, once we get the revised plans, it's moot to have further discussion about this.
I just have a question. Number one, I would like to know, and I'm sure the public would like to know generally what the revisions are. Landscaping, I'm not talking about anything specific, so we should understand that. Number two question is, when they submit it, I propose, I presume that it will be available on the planning board website. When will the revised plans be available for the public to be able to look at them?
So, those are typically, once we receive those, we can typically get anything posted up, Diana, with, I know with the IT group, what is it, a week? Something less than that, probably. I mean, so, yeah, once we've got the material back and revised-
It should be available at least a week before the August 17th meeting.
Correct, because we're asking for it 21 days prior to that.
That's good. And, and third of all, Mr. Collins said, without any further notice, the question is, and again, we don't know the specific amendments, but would there be anything potentially, and I don't know if anybody can answer this question, that might require an additional notification that wasn't included in the original application or the original notification? I don't know the answer to that, but that may be an issue.
So, I would ask Mr. Collins, is that-
It's not necessary if there are no variances, because you're-
Well, there may be, you talked about the walls.
I, nah, the way I asked for it was to comply with the ordinance about the wall, so I didn't hear a rejection of that request, so Mr. Goen can make a determination whether he's adding any necessary-
Yeah, obviously, if, obviously if we're going to trigger a request for new relief, we're going to read those, so that's not an issue.
Okay, thank you.
And I would ask, I would ask the applicant, when they send the plans, they open send them, I think, to Diana by electronic delivery, some sort of drop box or something like that, if they would copy the three attorneys who are the adversaries to the applicant-
Yep.
-and me and the professional-
Yes, we could.
That would be convenient.
Yep.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
But the, may we just have, can the applicant indicate generally what areas they're proposing amendments for? For instance, landscaping, lighting, I don't know.
We just had about a, a half an hour discussion as to what, what kind of changes we're proposing, so we're, we're going to, we're going to revise the-
We're changing the design of the buildings according to the request of the board. It's, it's design changes.
Okay, so they're changing the design of the building, are there going to be, at this point, and obviously, and maybe, are there going to be any amendments to landscaping, lighting, stormwater?
I, I think-
I don't know the answer to those.
I don't know that, well, I'll ask, I'll let you ask, Mr. Goen.
There may be, we haven't started to redesign the plans yet, we just determined this about 15 minutes ago.
Very good. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, we should ask Mr. Goen to confirm that he extends his headline for action required under the municipal land use law to at least the end of August 2022.
Yeah, you said August, August 17th, yes, correct.
I actually, I would like to get to it, just in case there's a problem, I'd like to get to the end of August.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just a brief comment, Chairman.
So, this is not an open segment.
I want to compliment the board.
Chair, what you thought-
You can accept the compliment. I want to compliment the planning board tonight, they've got very good questions and a good direction in terms of what is rail-dependent and what is not.
Thank you.
Sir.
The whole portion of the ordinance, and the ordinance change, and Commissioner Quinn was getting there, and I, I think the board is excellent questions and thinking about good minimum requirements moving forward.
Thank you.
Do you have a question, Mr. Chairman?
Chair?
Do I get a second?
Sir.
Adjourned.
I'm under arrest.
No, we, we just adjourned, Mr.- No, 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 we have fully testified, you weren't supposed to, but you did, so please raise your right hand.
Sure, I'm, I'm.
Do you swear or affirm that the statements you gave, and the statements you will give, are the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes.
And please state your name and address.
Tom Eisenberg, 128 Sussex Mills Road, Florida, New Jersey.
Thank you, Mr. Eisenberg.
And I retestify, the board did a very good job tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night.